Good evening. This is the Town of Wolfboro Planning Board Session this evening. I'll call the order. I'm going to start with an introduction of the Planning Board members. I'm Steve Webster, Vice Chair. We have Brad Harriman here for Selectman, Von Dugan, Kathy Barnard, Peter Goodwin, Roger Murray, and alternate Julie Jacobs.
And Jane. Jane is here.
Oh, okay, Jane, I didn't see you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
She snuck in.
Snuck in. So, public hearings. The first item here is the Lifetime Green Homes LLC. This hearing will be re-noticed for May 21st. It's going to be re-noticed in the paper this week. So, there's a glitch there, so that will be heard on May 21st.
What is the problem with the notice?
The butted notice didn't include the time of the sidewalk.
Thank you, Tavis. So, for discussion items this evening, for discussion amongst the board, we'll start with the Conservation Subdivision Regulation Draft. Any of you that's on the committee want to jump in on that?
I don't know. Do you want Tavis to...
Do you want to give us an overview, Tavis?
Sure. In short, the Conservation Subdivision Regulations have been something that's been on the Planning Board work list for a couple of years. This year, you established a subcommittee that was Kathy Barnard, Roger Murray, Von Dugan, and I participated. What you have in front of you in your packets is a track changes version. This is a, what I have saved it on the computer as a clean version. It goes through probably five or seven iterations of track changes. Largely, it remains the same as the existing language, but it is clarified to a certain degree. So, for those that are unfamiliar with Conservation Subdivision, and I apologize specifically to Roger that this isn't page numbered, but when you turn the page numbering on, it pulls in the page numbering from the original code document. So, it starts at page 146, jumps to 152, and it changes all over. But, as Conservation Subdivisions work, for example, if you are in a zone that requires a minimum of one acre lots and you have at least 10 acres, Conservation Subdivision is required. If you're in a zone that requires a two-acre minimum lot size and have at least 20 acres, a Conservation Subdivision is required. That goes on from there. Three acres requires 30-acre minimum, and either a five- or 10-acre zone with at least 50 acres requires Conservation Subdivision. So, the previous version had a number of exemptions where you would be exempt from those rules unless. What this proposes is that you must do a Conservation Subdivision unless you're doing, I'm on the second page for those following along, the subdivision will consist of three or fewer lots, and there will be no potential for future subdivision of any parcel or any of the lots created through the subdivision, or the subdivision will consist of lots, all of which having a minimum lot area of 400,000 square feet, and no potential future subdivision of the parcel or any lots created from the subdivision. The remainder of the changes are largely grammatical and/or what I would call for consistency. I'm on page, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, back of page 2 in the packet. Tracked, the word tracked was changed to parcel for consistency. 175, 151C was revisioned to the reference maps as part of the master plan, followed by another tract becoming parcel. Grammatical changes were made in 175, 151D. Maintenance language under 175, 155E was modified. Removed to any town land, or what's stricken through is unless read to by the town, the likelihood of the town picking up open space maintenance responsibilities in the subdivision are minimal. So, that was removed, and basically, it puts the burden of maintenance on the facilities within an open space cluster, or, I'm sorry, a Conservation Subdivision on the property owner. There is a requirement, I'm on the next page, 175, 152, that all Conservation Subdivisions require a noticed design review with the Planning Board prior to formal submission. All open space created through the subdivision process shall be subject to permanent conservation restrictions with the statutory reference. There's a discussion on permitted uses within a Conservation Subdivision. It basically defaults to the base zoning district in which the parcel is located. There's a long discussion of density, so this would be the proposed 175, 152D permitted And this is probably where the greatest question of the committee still exists, or question, I'll say, of members of the committee. You see in D permitted density, A calculate the net development density. We currently don't have a definition of net development density. The next, under B, is determined in the maximum density of the parcel through high-intensity soils or HISS mapping. There's a question of whether HISS mapping is still done. I've done some research with some engineering firms that say that, yes, DES does have a HISS to real soils conversion table, but HISS is not used as the standard anymore. I do have some confirmation that HISS mapping, the act of doing a HISS map removes wetland soils and steep slopes outright. The reason I mention that is the next one...
HISS mapping is high...
High-intensity soil survey.
Thank you.
The net development density by definition, net development density by definition requires you to take the gross acreage of a parcel, subtract all acreage of very poorly drained soils and slopes greater than 15% to 20%, it then requires from that a subtraction of 20% of the remaining land area for roads, and then divide the rest out by the minimum lot size of the zone. So, several of the engineers that I spoke to said the reason no one has done a Conservation Subdivision in Wolfboro is that it's, Wolfboro is asking you to double count acreage. By double count acreage, what they're suggesting is, when you look at D, and so, 175, 149D, little d, the lesser density in A through C above is what you're allowed. In reality, A through C only result in A. The net development density by the current definition is the lowest possible density allowed. And many of the engineers have said, why, in a subdivision where you're looking to create essentially cluster housing, why are you penalizing a property owner with subtracting 20% for roads? If the goal is to provide fewer roads, why are you discounting 20% of the gross land area for roads and then discounting or removing the roads from the density calculation? So, that's something for the Board to discuss. The remainder of the changes are largely clarifications of intent and purpose. It still requires 50% of the original parcel being considered open space or unbuildable. In that, it's also clear that the original intention was not to allow community wells or community septics in open space, which puts further burden on the land you can develop in. That's the only way to actually have cluster housing with reduced roads and having houses closer together is to externalize, if you will, the water and septic capacity. But if you can't put it in the open space and you've already lost greater than 50% of your lot, where do you put it? So, there are just some functional difficulties in actually developing under this as even proposed here from the engineer's perspective. Now, with that, there are some benefits. Down under 175, 152G, there was a change to the original tract having a minimum frontage of 50 feet on a Class 5 or better road instead of 100 feet. There is discussion on the next page under G2 about consideration of lots, building envelopes, or building sites. The idea is you don't have to create actual lots. You could create building sites under the same density. Yard requirements have been modified a bit. They were last modified following the last discussion on the road construction standards to make sure houses were far enough back based on the 60-foot right-of-way. That was one of the more recent changes. It still maintains 20 feet between buildings. With or without lots, the buildings have to be 20 feet apart. There was a hearty discussion at one of the more recent meetings about the density bonus. Actually, work through an example, if you started with X acreage, prescribe the net development density, and then, long story short, I propose as a density bonus of up to an additional 10% density bonus for additional open space. So, if you add, I'm sorry, a 5% density bonus where you provide another 10% of open space. So, 60% open space could get you effectively a 105% density. I have yet to go through these regulations with a draft project, but I will tell the Planning Board there's someone currently looking at 54 acres in a two-acre minimum zone, trying to figure out if even the proposed language works, without putting, again, well or septic in the open space. There is consideration for inclusionary zoning working here, clarification on the buffer area becoming a vegetated buffer area consisting of open, undisturbed, and undeveloped land. Again, the idea is to take the developed portion of the lot and have it set back from the roadway. So, parcels between 10 to 50 acres would have a 50-foot vegetated buffer, greater than 50 acres would have 100-foot buffer, so all homes would be at least 100 feet from the road passing by. That describes what a vegetated buffer is. All of the changes, the majority of the changes after that are switching from, again, tract to parcel in conservation space to open space. There was a lengthy discussion, 175, 152K, about how open space was going to be, what sensitive areas were. The group decided to base it on the definition in 175, 175, which is the definition. Provides a list. 175, 152K6 talks about what you can do in the open space, forest management, trails for passive, non-motorized use, snowmobile trails, and then there's the last reference in 175, 152.1 on pre-existing structures and how they factor into a Conservation Subdivision. So, I just watched everyone's eyes gloss over, but I'm sure you read it and took it all to heart before coming to the meeting. I guess the question from the group is, does the Board have any questions on the changes or want further review or information prior to moving forward? And of course, any of the subcommittee members can chime in.
How many applicants have come in and talked to you about using the Conservation
Since I've come to Wolfboro, I've had one person willing to even engage in the dialogue of Conservation Subdivision. Others that have come in with larger parcels have said, find me an exemption. So, I think in total, I've had five conversations in almost four years. Most people are not thrilled to be forced into the Conservation Subdivision. None of them have said, they've all understood why, but they don't see the benefit to them immediately, so they've walked away from the project. And the Board has seen three of those as three-lot subdivisions since then.
So, I'd like to comment. I have been a member of this committee. Actually, it was originally the Board asked Tavis, what is wrong with this subdivision? Why is nobody using it? It sounds so good. You know, if you look at the first page, we're about conserving open land, not having a lot of density up on streets, not really subdividing, but allocating 50% to open space and potentially connect it to other open spaces for not only people but wildlife. And Tavis came back with a list of things and reasons why people were not using it. And as a Board, we were curious, you know, this is another vehicle for development that could be used and could be useful and beneficial to not only encourage developers to use it, but also to the town aesthetic. And I have worked with this committee and, for the longest time, have been trying to explain why high-intensity soil mapping is one thing, but planning a subdivision that will not use lots designed for high-intensity soils, which actually, I looked at our own ordinance, our subdivision ordinance under 174.9, minimum lot size, and a part of it says, "Size requirements as may be needed for each lot to ensure groundwater quality protection," meaning to have both a well and a leach field on it. That is why you use HISS mapping, so that, they say, specified in Table 1A and 1B, minimum lot size by soil type. So, that is what we use it for. And if we push it in this form of subdivision where the lots can be from zero to small to as big as you want with 50% remaining open space, it's contradictory. I mean, we're not putting the well and the, oh, maybe the well and the septic on individual lots. We're putting it probably in the common area. And I have worked since the 80s on subdivisions. I was, I had an office in Bedford, Bedford, sorry, and I did this, and I've shown the committee these subdivisions. They're very popular. The leach fields are used as, for instance, soccer fields. They're not part of the individual lots. There are places that are beautiful or steep or wet that are untouched, either because, you know, they're delicate or they're unencouraging for development. So, what I did was actually, I put together an email in December, and I sent it to the committee members, and I've copied it for you. And I went through and looked at the New Hampshire State Planning Guide and looked for guidance. They have guidance there for everything. And they, their major recommendations are that you have a formula. And the formula says, here's the parcel, and then you take away the following things, and usually recommended, and you can see this, it's very poorly drained soils, 25% slopes or greater, and a formula for depending on the lot size, the overall lot size, how much you subtract for roads. You know, it goes from 5%, 10%, 15%. So, it's a very simple thing for somebody to come into town and look at a piece of land and say, this is how you do it. It's simple. I have to still do this. I have to plan it. I have to go to the Board, but it's, it makes sense. I have to figure out, you know, where these open spaces are and where the good land is for leach fields, and they're usually community systems, which are large, and they have to pass muster. It's not as if we're allowing septic systems and wells that won't meet state criteria. They have to, to get a permit. So, it just uncomplicates everything. So, I've made copies, and I think I only made six, so I can get more for people. Just, it goes through, basically, what the New Hampshire State Planning Guide says and how they suggest we do this. So, I mean, I think it's a question for the Board. Do we intend to make this usable or not? And I think we've, it was unusable before. We've made a little progress, but not nearly enough. If it's in the form that it's in, I don't understand. It seems nonsense to me, actually.
Do the changes which have been presented by Tavis approach what you're asking?
They help, but the HISS mapping and design, you know, figuring out how many lots you get by soil type to figure out what your density is, that's just a tax. That's a straight-up tax. You have to pay consultants for work that is meaningless. There's no, you're not doing individual lots with septic systems on them. So, it doesn't even make sense as far as subdivision is concerned.
So, my answer to that question has to do with what is the Planning Board trying to achieve? If someone has 54 acres and it's a two-acre zone, that would yield you how many lots?
So?
27. So, why does the regulation simply not allow you to have 27 homes on half the acreage? Which is the, one of the outcomes of this is that half of the parcel goes into open And as I view it, I don't know about the subcommittee, as I view it, if you have 54 acres, you should be able to have 54 acres of density.
What about land that is wetland, steep slopes?
Agreed, but you're not allowed to build in the wetlands around steep slopes now, and you're not allowed to count that area now.
And what about poorly drained, very poorly drained soils?
Very poorly drained is functionally a wetland. So, I have no problem taking out very poorly drained soils and steep slopes, but I don't, if, if we didn't have Conservation Subdivision Regulations and someone had 54 acres and two-acre zoning, the Board would say, well, you have 54 acres minus the roads. Okay, you get 22 houses.
Well, if they were doing a conventional subdivision, they'd have to do a high-intensity soil survey.
Correct.
Because they're putting the leach fields and a well on each individual lot.
Right.
That's the reason it doesn't work for this.
So, the last answer I had on this question was, it means you could still use his standards if you wanted, because there is a DES conversion according to their standards. The recommendation from DES and the engineers I spoke to would be to change not only in Conservation Subdivision, but in the subdivision regulations, soils to reference DES subsurface or AOT soils information, both of which say you can't use very poorly drained or steep slopes.
So...
The next question is, is it the Board's intention to hold somebody accountable or subtract density based on 20% of the parcel being used for roads when somebody might be putting in a frontage road accessing all of the homes? So, to me, in the conventional subdivision, hiss or no hiss, septic sewer, whatever you want to do, the easiest thing to do is to take gross acreage, subtract 30% for roads, divide the rest by the lot size, and that's pretty close to your ballpark.
30% is a lot.
Is a lot.
So, the state guidelines, if you look at the State of New Hampshire Planning Guide, depending on the size of your lot, 5 to 10 acres, it's 5%. 1.5 to 4.5 acres, it's 10%, 10%. One acre or less, 15%.
Yep.
So, the bigger the acreage is, the lower the percentage of roads.
All depends on the road standard.
Well, yeah. We're talking about that.
So, lose, in effort to not have people get overzealous in application, if you take out 30% because you're going to lose something for slopes, wetlands, roads, et cetera, if you take out 30%, it works 90% of the time. But the question for the Board is, do you want to take, we know we want to take out wetlands anyway. We know we're going to take out very poorly drained, and we know we're going to take out steep. Is it worth then, so if you start at X, you subtract very poorly drained and steep, you end up with Y. Then 20% of Y gets removed, then you calculate density. So, if the whole idea is to cluster homes in an area with reduced roads anyway, why are you taking out 20%? That is one of the biggest concerns that comes across, because physically, the way it's worded, open space doesn't allow you to have externalities in it such as community well or leach field. The state model does. The Wolfboro model does not. You can't have a leach field in your open space. You can't have your community well in the open space. Literally, the way the ordinance is written right now is the open space, and I'm not saying this is right or wrong, it's just something to think about. The open space right now is functionally conservation easement, and nothing goes in there.
Can the open space be the wetland and the steeps?
Yes.
Yes. But you're subtracting the acreage anyway. You might have a parcel that has no wetland or steep on it, and you're still taking out 50%, then 20% for roads. So, you're taking something that by regular zoning definition, let's just say you had 50 acres with nothing steep and nothing wet, and a two-acre minimum, that's 25 houses. I get the intention behind Conservation Subdivision entirely. You can't build on half of it, but you should, to me, it's only right, if you will, to give somebody the 25 houses on the half that's left. That, to me, is the incentive to do it while still conserving at least half of the land in these parcels. And I say that because at multiple meetings, it's like, this is Wolfboro, we have this open-spaced field. We don't want to just cover everything with a house every two acres. I totally get that and support it. But if you, if you reduce somebody's right below, I mean, and maybe that's the goal. I'll throw it out there. Maybe the goal is to say, do three acres and agree, or do three houses and agree to do nothing else. But there's a strange balance between a Board that says they want to work on housing opportunities while still having a regulation that is very pro-conservation, which is not bad, but you're also taking away development potential from that same lot.
There's also a huge stick in here, and the stick is, and I mean that by a weapon...
As opposed to a carrot?
Yeah, as opposed to a carrot, is that if you do, you know, the only exemption is a three-lot subdivision. If you do three lots, let's say you do 300 acres, it's got adequate road frontage for a number of lots. Let's say you do your three lots upfront, the rest of the acreage can never be used. The old-fashioned way was to leave road width through it so that in the future, and we have these little right-of-ways everywhere in town, you could develop the backlands, which is perfect for this because we don't want to see all the little houses on the street. So, in this, we've eliminated that, so that cannot even be done. So, we're making giant, I don't know, farms or, I don't know what we're trying to do, actually, with this.
You're saying that we're making big reserves off the road. You can build three houses along the road, and then you got 50 acres in the back.
You can never subdivide again.
No.
Right. And so, therefore, you can't end up seeing that back acreage, you're just seeing the three houses.
Right.
But that's how you undermine the Conservation Subdivision, because if you don't have that restriction, then everybody just comes in with three lots and infinitum.
Yeah, three lots every other year.
Yeah. But, are you suggesting that we delete A and B, or B, although A seems more stringent?
In which area are you in?
Elected density.
I'm thinking that, I don't, I'm just thinking generally, we should have a formula that says you take the parcel, you subtract the same things that you subtract when you're doing a subdivision, 25%, no, very poorly drained soils, and anything over the 25%. It's consistent with our own subdivision regulations, so that's good. It's the same. So, those two things, very poorly, 25% or greater slopes, and then there's some formula for roads, or we could say, actually, show us what the roads are, and that's what the right-of-way is. You know, if it's, I mean, I think 30%, 20% could be huge for some acreages.
Well, really, that becomes almost project-specific. It might be that there's a large wetland fronting on a Class 5 road, and the development has to be further back. So, to even get to the buildable portion, you have X length of road. It might end up being 20%, so it doesn't matter. But if, you know, the one that came in recently is right off Pleasant Valley Road, not to get anyone's alarm bells going, hypothetically, 54 acres... Hypothetically, 54 acres on Pleasant Valley Road, the goal would be to have three houses up front on a frontage road, so there'd be only one curb cut on the Pleasant Valley Road, and then in the future, build three lots out back. What I had to explain to them is if you want the three lots further back, you need to come in with the full conservation subdivision up front. And what they're finding is, new formula, old formula, just doesn't work. And they said, I find it very difficult to think in Wolfborough, when you have 54 acres, only 10 of which is wet, you can't have six house lots. But that's what the regulations are prescribing. So to me, something, it's either perfect, and you can tell me if that's what the board is going for, but something seems awry in a lot that would otherwise support 27 units, can't get six, when we're trying to come up with what I understood to be a provision that furthered conservation, furthered open space, and yet allowed people to get the same density. Something isn't working.
And to push the structures in the neighborhood off the road, not have those houses right up front, and preserve the space that's valuable. Let's say in the front, there's wetlands. Let's say in the front, there's, you know, 20% slopes or something less desirable, why not let them use the property and get the density from it, subtracting, you know, these things that we've just listed, and make a subdivision that meets the criteria that's in the beginning. Diversity of lot sizes, building densities, housing choices, adequate open space, economical, efficient environmental provision of public services, conserve open land, you know, all the things in the preface. That's what, I think that's what we want, but then we go along and further away at it pretty aggressively.
I, I have a suggestion on this issue. Unfortunately, Vaughn, you were not able to attend some of our meetings in person because you didn't want to affect the rest of us.
I made this super clear, and I even came in when I was really sick once and gave you this memo that I--
And she was sick.
I was sick. You couldn't even hear me.
My suggestion is that if we could sit down and you could explain this to us, that that might be a step forward if you--
That who what?
That if we could sit down and discuss this in this committee, we could look at this further.
I have discussed it with you. I mean, we're not going to committee it to death, I'm going to get tired of doing it.
All right.
Seems to me that following the state guidelines makes sense. It also seems to me that you should be able to use open space for the septic area. These are, these are, these are development common sense items. We're, we're trying to promote housing development. In this case, it's a, could be a well-designed cluster development.
Okay, well, we, we really need to make this much simpler.
So why don't we follow the New Hampshire State Planning Guide? There are a lot of--
Right.
--skilled people putting this together.
With a formula.
Yes, with a formula.
Yeah.
And, and the reason that it's here now is that, you know, we want people's thoughts. Is this making it simpler for people? You all know what we're trying to achieve. And, and so, you know, we need some kind of feedback so we can keep going on this.
I think what might be helpful is for the board to discuss, I mean, other than just listening to two or three people here, but for the board to discuss, if you have 100 acres in a two acre zone, should you be allowed 50 units as long as you can invite, as long as you can not develop in the sensitive lands? Question mark. Is the board comfortable with community wells or community septic, whatever your case may be, in open space? Question mark. I mean, these are board discussions. How you get to that point in the language is the easy part, but the board has to decide, you know, I mean, right now, the draft in front of you said that the open space can be used for forest management, trails for passive parentheses, non-motorized use, and snowmobile trails.
Which is cuckoo. You can have non-motorized trails, and then you can have snowmobiles.
There are different, there are different regulations for the winter, as in the rail trail ends up being something which is used by--
But you, but you can't put a leach field underground.
And, you know--
Question mark.
You can't have a soccer field, you can't have a tennis court, you know, things that other towns allow in open spaces. They even allow community buildings in some towns. Let's say it's a swimming pool.
And right, wrong, or indifferent, where does, where does the board want to go? I mean, this is what the committee came up with, with some duress.
Sorry.
Roger, can you explain why the formula produced by the state of New Hampshire is not something that you would go with?
I would have to look at it again, and, but I would not, I would not allow leach fields in the open space, that's where environmentally sensitive land is supposed to be. And I think that you should not necessarily, if you have 50 acres in a two acre zone, you should not necessarily be able to put in 25 houses. If in fact, say, 10 acres is a swamp.
Well, no, we're not suggesting that.
I, I would also suggest that it may be that some of the conservation land is not, quote, "sensitive" land, it is just land set aside, and so therefore, a leach field in it is not dealing with any sensitive areas. It is something which is used for the community, it is something which is okay, and if there's a soccer field on it, or there's whatever, it is not sensitive. So I don't think that that particular argument works. Now, it may end up being that they're putting, that 50% of the land in that particular parcel is sensitive, it's wetland, it's steep, it's whatever, okay, that would be a case when you couldn't end up doing that. But it may end up being that some of the conservation land is land.
Otherwise buildable, yeah.
So I, I gave the example, and it's in that little package, at the very back, there is a blackened out outline of what the total parcel is. And this happened in the late 80s. It's there, and people really think it's great, it's, you go way out, Pulpit Road, and there's a little pond at the end. On the way, you go through all this conservation or, you know, open area that's counted. In, it on the left, on the side of the road, is a really big leach field. That is where the kids play soccer. It's dedicated play space, it was designed for that, even integrating the vent pipes, you know, around nets, it's just, it's, it works.
Could we apply this example to the 54 acre piece that you're talking about?
Yes, because that's likely coming in front of you as a conceptual sooner than later. There is another project that is just over the Wolfborough Tuftonboro line, where they, I believe Tuftonboro had a very similar conservation subdivision, and this is an example of how it didn't work. And I can see if that engineer is willing to bring that to the board, just to show how the numbers, how a bill didn't become a project, if you will.
So it never happened?
No. Well, it didn't work. And the reason, you know, it, maybe it didn't work because the developer needed X number of houses, and only Y was possible, or, but, the intent was, we want to have housing over here, we want to employ something along the lines of conservation subdivision, but it doesn't work for the following reasons. I'm not suggesting that the town regulations by any means should benefit the developer to the maximum extent. I'm not suggesting that the town should be encouraging septic systems in the middle of wetlands.
You can't, anyway.
But you can't, anyway.
No.
My can, my concern professionally looking at this is, the board doesn't have any ability to even consider an option in this. If this, then not that, and if this, then not this. You don't even have potential to say, but this creative soccer field over here makes sense. That's just one example, I have no idea what that project is. But to me, the board should be able, and it's, it's not waivers, variances, however you want to think of it, the idea is, what is, what is the best development potential for this site given these existing conditions? I don't think this gives you the tools to evaluate any particular site.
Could you evaluate it per the state standards with the formula?
Sure.
Yeah. The other thing that this does is, it doesn't let you to do, do a standard subdivision anymore. Let's say you have 400 acres, you, you can't. You have to do a 50% open space. You're not allowed to put a road in and divide it up and get your leach field and your well on its own lot, that you're just not allowed to do the old form of development anymore with this, the way it's written. I don't think that was the intention.
I think it was.
Oh.
I think it was done specifically that way to preserve as much open space as possible going forward, but I think this goes further than that, and says, not only do you not get a traditional subdivision, but you may not get anywhere close to that potential density.
Well, maybe we should start with, do we want to allow traditional subdivisions anymore as a board? Because this eliminates them.
While trying to build housing.
Yeah, because you just said that, it just means like you only get to have one house on that huge lot.
And, well, the, Steve's point of while trying to provide housing, you're definitely limiting your areas for housing development, which maybe that's fine, if that's the direction the town and the board want to go, that's completely understandable. But are you intending to cut your feet out even a little bit more by saying, not only are we taking half the land available? I'm not saying you can build on wetlands now, or you can't build on steep slopes now, you can't. But if you have 54 acres, and you take out that stuff, maybe you should, maybe under traditional format, you would have 20 houses. Okay, fine. But if someone is willing to put half of it in open space, should they not conceivably expect to get the same number of houses out of it? I mean, this is a willing action of putting half the acre, well, not as written, but in their mind, they're conceding half of their buildable area and not even getting the same density out of it, which is very counter to many of these in the state. Just something to think about. I'm not saying what's right, wrong, indifferent, it's not my opinion. This goes beyond putting stuff in open space.
So with a, and I'm going to take this example, 54 acres, let's say that, what, 14 of those are not buildable, as in this wetland. So now they have 40 acres they could build on, they literally could--
Nope, take 20% out.
For roads.
Okay, so now we're talking about--
30 acres.
32.
What?
15 lots.
30 acres, 15 lots.
And so therefore--
If, if you can do that after subtracting the actual roads, but yes, so--
So, you know, and, and as a question of, you know, where do you put those lots? Do you put them so that some of the lots end up being stuff that has half the lot which is buildable, and a half the lot which is not, which, because it's in wetland?
So under the current regulation, under this, under the current draft, you would have a 100-foot vegetated buffer along Pleasant Valley Road, so they have to go back at least 100 feet, they already can't be in the wetland, and they can't be in the open space. So they're trying to fit the 13 houses, if you will, 12 houses, in the front portion, and to do that at 20 feet apart, they're so close together, you can't have individual well and septic, and they say, well, where do we put the community well and the community septic? Because it can't go in the wetland, and it can't go in the open space, and it can't go in the yard. How do we do this? And the answer is, you can't, so you then reduce your density down. I'm not saying the regulation is cutting the density down, but conforming with the regulation is having that effect. And my question to the board is, is that what you intend?
It's a taking, is what it is, I think.
Could you say that again?
It's a taking. You're taking land away. Let's say you have 500 acres, really legitimately now, unless you give up maybe 60% of it, and I don't know how you design it without the leach fields in the common space, I, I've never done that before, and I've done a number of these. It's mystifying, you've got three lots, I guess they're farms.
Well, one of the issues, or one of the things in the master plan is associated with keeping the, the, the view of our town the way it is. And, you know, if you have--
Could you speak up a little?
Hold your microphone. Keep the, the view of our town the way it is, and we'd like to have that. If you end up putting three houses along some road, Pleasant Valley Road in this case, maybe, you now end up having degradation of that particular view as you drive down the road. If in fact, you end up having 12 houses that are set back 100 feet, and you may end up then seeing these houses, perhaps the three of them, with then another six or eight or 10 beyond them, does that necessarily impact the view which you end up seeing as you drive down Pleasant Valley Road? And my suggestion would be that it doesn't. And I live on Pleasant Valley Road, so I, it's not a trivial statement, but, you know, the idea is, you know, is the frontal view what we worry about? And if it is, is a conservation subdivision which puts that off the road and with more houses behind it worse than what you have if you just build three houses on the road? And, and those houses undoubtedly are going to have lawns that go to the roads, so you're going to see the house immediately.
Not under this, but I get what you're saying.
Not the way this works, but--
Right, but, but I could end up putting a subdivision with three lots on a, on this particular piece of property, which then would end up having all these lots right on the road. So they all would be visible and with nice manicured lawns.
Putting the other half of the glass of water back in, the whole back 40-some acres would be undeveloped forever, but there'd be no public benefit.
They'd cut them up into their own three lots, they'd have these long tails, they're little mini farms that are narrow and long. You know, that's not unusual in New England, but is that what we want? Do we want more housing and have flexibility like the beginning of this, this first page, our goals? You know, the idea? And we, we had actually Randall Oren, the guy who wrote a lot about conservation subdivision, came here years ago and gave a present, a discussion, and we broke into groups, and we each had the same parcel, and we all designed subdivisions, and nobody was that upset about the way they turned out. I mean, it, it was kind of a nice thing, and a lot of them were very similar to each other, because there was obvious, here's the wetlands, here's the slope, here's a nice field, you know, maybe we'll put the houses around the perimeter. It looks like, you know, a green. So I, I, this, I don't understand this, and I was trying to work on it, really.
Perhaps we do that with the 54 acres?
Yeah, no, I know, any acreage large enough to rationalize doing this.
Well, this one's here now, so why not?
Well, it's not here yet, but yeah.
As Tavis explained, that those individuals don't want to do a conservation subdivision, they want to do the three lots on the road.
Because they've looked at--
No, no, not, not the 54 acre people. The 54 acre people are looking to see if they can do the 12 houses they want to do while complying with the conservation subdivision. So they've already started the process, as I understand it, of meeting with an engineer to find out if they can make it work without putting leach fields or wells in the open space, et cetera. So it'll be interesting to see what comes back.
I'm, I'm curious, when we were saying conservation subdivision stuff, but then we want each building to have its own septic system and its own well, wouldn't it be better for everything to be community well and community septic system?
Yeah, I don't think they're saying it has to have it on its own lot, but it can't be in the open space that we cut out 50%. So it gets harder and harder to do. Normal subdivisions that are conservation or cluster, the leach field goes in the common area. I've never seen an ordinance yet that does this.
So I, I think something to think about is, how close would you want to live to another home? There's a certain tolerance level where people don't want to live on top of each other, but maybe if the association dues go down because there's only 600 feet of road versus 2,400 feet of road for the same number of houses, it makes sense that I'm okay with my neighbor being 20 feet away. But once you put-- But once you put a series of homes 20 feet away, there literally is no space for a well and septic. So that then has to go outside the built envelope. But if you've already tried, you know, you employ your extra 10% of open space to pick up more density, but it, it doesn't work. Now, if you're on a huge parcel with no wetlands, this works fine.
For four houses.
But, you know, I sort of say it little tongue in cheek, but if it's not built in Wolfboro, it's steep and it's probably wet. So this doesn't really, this really increases the odds of less housing. And if that's something the board is okay with, that's fine. I'm just asking the question, is the board really trying to further reduce density below where you have it by going through these regs? Or is this meant to be an incentive? As Vaughn said, is this supposed to be a carrot or a stick? So the sense I'm getting from people that have come in and approached this, it's definitely a stick now, and the current draft is not much softer.
I think it's worse. You can't even do a conventional subdivision.
You can't do one now.
It's already in there?
It's already in there, yeah. That's why this board, at least since I've been here, has only seen two or three lot subdivisions.
So I guess what we're saying is it needs some more work.
That's my question to the group. If this is, from what you've heard, if this is going where you want it to go, you're well on your road.
Seems to be kind of intuitive.
If what you've heard or what you're reading is not necessarily where you think it should be going, I think the committee needs to hear it and get some direction as to next steps.
It seems a bit counterintuitive that this is, they're putting the gobbage on everything, but yet we're hitting so hard and the whole community is talking about ADUs, you know? You can't get any closer to your neighbor than that, but then you got this thing that's just not working. They don't seem to mesh.
So I, I think we should all study at least the information that we have in front of us and look at the state guidelines. They've spent a lot of time recommending things to the town and all the towns in New Hampshire. I think we should, you know, have, you can find it online, the State of New Hampshire Planning Guide, and you can look in there for conservation subdivision and see what they recommend. I just did little clips of it, but it's a, you know, booklet.
I have the feeling that in some ways, we are trying to invent a wheel, and other people have done a pretty good job of it. And from what Vaughn has talked about, and what I have read and what she produced, it seems like a plan which is good, and we definitely should consider it. And it would encourage, it would encourage more housing in Wolfboro, and there is a need to have more housing in Wolfboro. These are not going to be the houses which are sitting on the lakefront with, you know, million-dollar costs. And so therefore, this is something which people who would like to live in Wolfboro but don't have those means may be able to, to deal with.
And we would protect sensitive areas, you know?
And, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It also kind of brings in that neighborhood thing too, and you're talking about, you know, buildings just 20 or 30 feet away from each other and several of them at a time. That's, that's kind of a neighborhood forced at that, but it's, it's your, you know, if you're going to live there, you're going to have to be in a neighborhood. You're right there next to, right next there, you know, you're not 100 feet away at any point.
And for some people, they won't want to have the, you know, quarter acre lot. There will be people who want at least five acres. Fine, you know, go find those, yeah. But I've lived in places that I've had quarter acres. I have half an acre now. It's very workable. Those people in that neighborhood, they hire an Easter bunny, you know, for the whole neighborhood. They have activities just for them. It's good.
Same way in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Wonderful. So can I make a suggestion that we move this to the next work session and pick it back up again?
Yeah, but it would be good if, if Tavis could do some drawings so that we could see, you know, what, what these regulations would look like on paper. A site plan.
Take the, the state formula and apply it to a couple of lots in town?
Yes.
Great idea.
And show us the ones that didn't work, like the one in Tufton Borough, or next to Tufton Borough, so we can see why it doesn't work.
Show the bad math.
It's a good, good idea.
That makes sense.
Okay, so we're going to, you're going to come back to the planning board.
Sounds like, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Let me just make a couple of minor comments that are really on 150, 175, 152H. Right now it reads, "All structures shall be set back at least 20 feet." And I think originally it was from the pavement, but if you look at that from the perspective of the current 25 foot, 50-foot wide right-of-way, or the proposed 60-foot wide right-of-way, that would mean a structure, a building or structure could be set back in the case of the 50-foot, five feet from the edge of the right-of-way, and the case of the 60-foot, it would be one foot. So I think it needs to be 20 feet from the right-of-way so you can at least park a vehicle in front of your house.
Usually you could have a subdivision where there is no private land, so, I mean, it, it has to work for all lot sizes.
But you have a road right-of-way there, which is not owned by the abiding homeowner.
Well, maybe the abiding homeowner is in an association and everybody owns it. I've lived in one of those.
So I, I get the gist, but it could be something, "All structures shall be set back 20 feet from."
Each other.
Private road right-of, private road right-of-way, or 20 feet from edge of pavement for a common drive.
May I suggest that it seems as if there's a movement to move away from this particular draft, and so therefore, wordsmithing and dealing with particulars of it is not necessary at this time.
Right.
And I, I respect Roger's close reading, and I think it's valuable. And if we come back to this, then it's very important, but I, I don't think we need to wordsmith this particular document.
I wasn't aware that we were planning to throw this all out, but.
It doesn't mean it's all thrown out.
It's not, it's not thrown out, but we're looking right now at alternate versions. So if we come back to this one, then let's work on it.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Good.
All right, moving on. Road regulation. Tavis, do you?
Yep. So where we left off at the last discussion was to go back and see if Tavis and Steve Randle could work together to come up with the appropriate DOT gravel sections and update something, and then come up with appropriate figures to go along with them. So if you flip to the back three or four pages of this, the ultimate recommendation from Steve and I, of course, the board can weigh in, was to basically strike for, section four, as you currently see it, or as it is currently worded, and to move instead to table one, which describes residential dead-end, residential, and commercial slash industrial right-of-ways. That addresses your centerline radius, your minimum curb radius if applicable, profile grades, and everything you see in that table. And then on addendum A, figures A through D, believe it or not, these are really the cross-sections that were described in the previous section four in a way that's very easily readable to someone building a road.
Graphic.
So again, you know, the town of Wolfboro, road cross-section, pavement is 22 feet, including bike lanes, 20 feet for residential dead-end roads. Because this is all in subdivision, the planning board would have the ability to modify that down further. Again, the recommendation from Steve Randle is the road base remains consistent regardless of what the surface treatment is. Wolfboro has not had a cul-de-sac detail or a teardrop cul-de-sac detail before. Those are going to become more and more prevalent, in my view, and Steve's view, as the lots that are remaining are in between other developments. This doesn't mean the planning board can't call for connectivity between developments by any stretch, but if connectivity cannot be achieved, this gives somebody an actual design to hold to that addresses life, safety, fire, and police response vehicles, things like that. And then one of the things that has long been missing, literally, but attempted through the driveway regulations, is what you see in addendum A, figure D, which explains how a driveway meets a road. And it has a prescription for that and something for someone to design to. So there's been an understanding that all new driveways need a driveway permit. This is what becomes the standard if it's not a town road. So when someone's building on a private road or something to that effect, this is the standard that gets imposed by the planning board during subdivision. So there's something tangible to review at the building permit phase.
So I have a question. We have lots in town that you start off, and, you know, there's a hillside, that would preclude any development or any driveway at all. I mean, I think we approved four or five lots on Sewell Road a year or two ago, and those are unapproachable. So I don't know if that's the intention. I mean, if we have lots already, they must be allowed to have a driveway, even if they can't meet this grade standard.
Right, that would be something that they'd have to bring up to, you know, when they did their, their.
To get a labor.
If they needed relief, you mean?
Relief, yeah. They, they will, I promise you.
I mean, they're going to have to be a little creative to approach the driveway at a certain angle, blah, da, blah, you know, and that would be part of the approval.
Okay, as long as this is not absolute.
It's just tough to get to.
It, it's not, and if you look at the bottom image on that page, it's looking at 30 feet edge of pavement to edge of pavement, where addendum A is saying 22 feet of pavement. So I would be, I would be surprised if someone attempted a driveway at the edge of a road that exceeded 10% right out of the gate.
I could show you one.
I wouldn't wish that on enemies. That's steep.
Right, oh, I know.
So someone has to design around, so this isn't saying this is what has to be achieved, but the goal is this, and you have to design something. Because if you're, if you're exceeding 10% coming off the edge of the road, the ambulance can't get to you.
So this is a goal set?
Yes.
So the bottom line here is that the design criteria is reflected in the graphics so that the words match the drawings.
Yes, all of.
In the construction business, we want the words to match the drawings, and it's, it's.
Correct.
Great to be able to cross-reference.
The only other comment that Steve Randle had, and I, I think his phrase was that he thinks he may have been misheard by the board. And you could go either way on this, because we went round and round in circles on this. The way it's currently worded is that all roads have to meet the current DOT standard. So if it's DOT 2023, that's what you build to. DOT 2024, that's what you build to. He would be equally comfortable if the town said DOT standard is of 2024, because that's the day this is adopted.
Well, how about the current regulation by the state?
If you say current regulation, all that obligates somebody to do with the, so if you think about it, Robin Akers not long ago came into the Board of Selectmen and said, "We would like the town to take over the road." I watched three people chortle. Chortling aside, the road standard they were held to was the current standard. In order for that to be considered, they had to bring the road up to that standard, which was the discrete year. If you leave it the way it's worded now, someone has to find out what year was the subdivision approved, and then go back to that discrete year. That's fine. You're achieving the same thing. Does that make sense?
I don't think so. I mean, if you say the current year, doesn't that mean now?
Yes, but if the project, if the subdivision was approved in 2024, somebody built a subdivision to the 2024 standard, and in 2058 comes in and wants the town to take over the road, the intent is they have to meet the 2024 standard, not the 2058 standard? Question mark, I leave it to you.
I think they would have to meet the 2058 standards.
So that, that's where this.
Standards.
That's where this is going. I just wanted to throw it out there for folks.
Does this incorporate roads that exist, and then are rebuilt?
No, this is, this is any, any road being built after adoption of this, until this is modified again.
I think I would agree with what you said there, with what Steve's interpretation would be, that the date that we adopt these, we would go by the 2024 standards, DOT standards at the time, specify that out, and then if in, you know, two or three years down the road, DOT comes out with a new standard, say in 2026, 2027, we want to update, we could come back, revisit this, say now we'll go by the, whatever date that is for the standards. But I think to leave it as to the current standards, and if some drastic change happens at DOT that doesn't make sense for the town, then you're holding a developer or something, you know, to a standard that could be, I'm not saying unachievable, but it'll be, you know, could be the difference between making or breaking a development, basically. You'd put it out of financial possibility to even build it to a standard like that. So others are, so if they built it in 2024, as Tavis said, they come in and say they build it out in five or six years, come in for, to have the road laid out, taken over by the town, and the, and the standards changed drastically, then all of a sudden, now they're looking at a multimillion-dollar construction cost to bear on the, you know, if it's a betterment, onto the lot owners in there. To me, it doesn't make sense, you know? These standards are good right now, the 2024 standards that we have and, you know, specked out in here. I think they're, they're appropriate, and they're going to be good roads, and I would be very comfortable just tying them to that date specific and leaving it that way.
DPW agrees with that.
Pardon?
DPW agrees with that.
Yeah.
And we could change it.
And we could change it.
Change it down the road.
Where this comes in is on 3.16. So on 3.16, you would simply say roadway grade shall be constructed in conformance with the 2024 accepted NHDOT standards, as opposed to current. The change at the last meeting was to make it say currently accepted. I have a feeling to Brad's point, even future select boards are likely to say, well, it was approved in '24, they built it to '24 standards, it, we can verify that it is to current standard.
Makes sense.
Right.
But to remove that question, you could put that in there, and it simply updates every time you update. The one that, he did not seem bothered to buy is in 3.04, where it refers to, at the bottom of the paragraph, "Upon consultation with the current MUTCD." That does not need to be changed to a date specific. So whatever the current MUTC, I'm sorry, the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, that should be followed consistently at whatever time street names and the like are addressed. I did go through this, let's see, 3, 3.11 is the other one. "Driveways and accesses to local street network proposed by street should be constructed in accordance with the 2024 regulations as adopted." So if you want to make that move, I can go through and make the remainder of those changes.
In 311, I think it should read zoning ordinance, not zoning regulations.
Where does it say zoning?
Right at the bottom.
At the bottom.
Well, that's, driveways are defined in zoning regulations. You want that to say what?
Well, if it's, there's, we don't have a document that is a zoning regulation. We've got a zoning ordinance. If it's something else, then it should. If it's something else, it should reference whatever it is. So it's specific to the, whatever the appropriate document is.
I have a question, and I don't see it addressed in here. We have one standard for all the roads, and it seems like roads have different functions. There are collector roads, there are neighborhood roads.
So Steve spoke to that at his last appearance. Steve's position is the road base should be the same regardless of what the surface of the road looks like. And the off-chance that it become a town road in the future, the base should be built to a town road base, but had no problem with the planning board saying, well, this is a local residential street in a cluster subdivision, maybe 16 feet of asphalt makes sense. He has no problem endorsing that for the planning board.
Maybe there's a sidewalk or a...
Correct.
Yeah.
His goal is everything below pavement.
Is that stated somewhere in here?
No, he stated that.
In front of Addendum A, there is a one in parentheses that says at planning board discretion, but I couldn't find out what that referred to.
I will find that.
And I think that note should be on here, too, about the base being the most important part.
Well, I think maybe what it needs to say is something to the effect of, planning board shall have ability to modify surface course treatment, because the previous draft allowed the planning board to allow a gravel road versus an asphalt road, or a paved road, whatever you want to do. The base still becomes a critical part, so maybe something in here needs to be identified that while all road bases shall be constructed to a 60-foot right-of-way based on Addendum A, planning board shall have ability to consider width of pavement and/or paving material.
And what about a one-way road? Would that be half of this? No, the same with just a one-way road? Let's say you have a neighborhood with, you know...
I don't know if Public Works would support a one-way road. But that question wasn't asked.
What about like a boulevard with trees down the middle?
All sorts of things that aren't in Wolfboro, so we...
No, but they could be.
If you want to go bigger, we can go bigger. I can look into boulevards, avenues...
One-way streets.
Divided highways, one-way streets. I can go as far as you want.
If there's an existing road that some organization wants to take over, have the town take over, and the right-of-way is not centered on the road, as in there's 60-foot right-of-way, but you don't have 30 feet on one side and 30 feet on the other side of the center line, is that included in here, or is it not? I mean, the diagram ends up saying that it has to be.
Well, so any road going forward, the road will be in the center of the right-of-way. Anything that existed prior to this would not be covered by this anyway. But I understand your question.
I.e., most of the roads in town.
Anything else to look at, consider, modify, thoughts?
Well, yeah, I have a thought, and I think Vaughn touched on this at one of the last meetings. The town has had a 50-foot wide right-of-way, and while from a Public Works perspective, I can understand why maybe you want a 60-foot right-of-way, but one of the things that every survey ever conducted for a master plan has said that people like the rural character of the town, and I don't think a 60-foot wide right-of-way is rural part of the town, is rural in nature, and I think probably a very large number of our streets don't have a 60-foot right-of-way. And I would not be in favor of increasing it from 50 to 60 feet.
It also pushes the houses.
Yeah.
You know, you couldn't have a Pleasant Street at all. The houses would be...
And, you know, even if you look at, you know, you get on Forest Road, and you look at some of the developments off to the, you know, Cricket Hill Estates with 50-foot rights away, those look pretty broad.
Although that's a terrible example, because the drainage there is awful.
Yes, it is terrible. They're trying to do something about that.
And that's part of the reason for looking for room for things.
But, I mean, they just put new drainage in extensively on Pleasant Valley Road, and that's no 50-foot right-of-way.
Well, are we confusing right-of-way with the pavement width?
No.
In the section I'm looking at, the pavement shall be 22 feet, including bike lanes, 20 feet for residential dead-end roads.
No confusion there.
No.
I just might suggest, and, you know, thinking about what Roger just said, what 60-foot versus 50-foot, if you're looking at like an Addendum A here, Figure A, you know, the cross-section of the road there with the 22-foot pavement, the shoulders and ditch lines, you know, that would, in that situation there, that would fit within a 50-foot right-of-way. But if you're designing a neighborhood, and you end up putting sidewalks in, too, maybe that would be where you want to look at situations like that, put in a 60-foot right-of-way. If you're including sidewalks, if you're not going to have a sidewalk in, you know, designed into the subdivision or the new roadway, then possibly keep it at 50 feet. You're just kind of throwing that out there for thought, anyway, but...
Building in stormwater drainage, having utility poles that aren't running down ditch lines, there's all sorts of things that 60 feet allows. I wholly admit, it was never done that way before.
Yeah, so I actually ordered the book that was referenced in the last version that we have. It's the Neighborhood Street Design by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And I'll just pass this around. It shows different road cross-sections depending on the kind of neighborhood you're in. And I think they all have sidewalks.
Funny thing.
I... There is at least some movement in town to have a number of the private roads in town taken over by the town. And I'm going to suggest that the right-of-way of 60 feet may end up precluding many of those. And so therefore, it may end up being something that, A, makes the town easier, or it makes it easier for the town to say, no, we're not going to take them over. Or it ends up saying that these people need to be grandfathered in because the town approved that particular roadway when it was built.
That is the standard that is being held. The previous standard with the 50-foot right-of-way and the width of pavement, et cetera. What the hurdle is, is that most of the roads built in town don't have any of the road base built to the 50-foot dimension either. And the position I've seen the selectmen take is you need to bring the road up to the town's standard, not current, but the standard that was required when you did this. You know, including as-built, that show there aren't septic tanks or leach fields hanging out in the right-of-way that the town would be owning. If it is, it needs to be relocated. The road base needs to be brought up to the standard that applied at the time of the subdivision, which is the whole point in changing the number in here to 2024 standard, et cetera.
Do we actually have a document that shows us each year the roads were constructed and what the standards were then?
I'm only aware of one set of road regulation standards, which is the one that's being amended to this, and that is the standard that's being applied going back. There are certain subdivisions where the planning board was given a cross-section of a road, and that can be used also. But what many can't document, it's covered by the inspection protocol in here, but that really didn't happen then. So the first step is to find out, well, what does your road look like? Do some cross-sections. What does the base look like? Where is it compared to the standard? Here's your delta, bring it up to that standard, then the town can consider it. But that would not apply...
Today.
To those roads, correct. So I'm willing to go back, if the board is interested, and look at alternate cross-sections based on that. Grab it from you. And ask, you know, make some changes regarding the sub-base, et cetera. Planning board to have clear waiver authority on width of road, surface treatment, et cetera. I will redefine where the at planning board discretion came from. I think that's actually left over from somewhere else, but clarify where that is, so it's not an outlier.
But I do think the road base is very important, because the town has spent a lot of money on roads that were not properly installed. Whether you start with One of Bisaki Estates, or, I don't know, off Forest Road...
Embassy Estates.
Embassy Estates, where the town got burned to the tune of $200,000, some odd thousand.
But to that end, I think the question of 50 feet versus 60 feet needs to get addressed. And I don't know if you want to have Steve come back or not. I mean, you can draw the line wherever you want to draw the line.
I think the 50 or 60 feet should be addressed. I'd also suggest there's some present town roads that weren't built to spec, as in, if you looked at what Pleasant Valley Road was like before it was redone, you know that it was a cow path that they threw some pavement on.
Okay. I'll keep moving the ball forward.
Great, anything further?
Okay, so what's the next step?
Good question. I'm looking for feedback from the board. If you want me to go through and come up with alternative surface treatments, like you are flipping through right now, I can include those or not include those. I can include it as an Addendum B to say the planning board has the ability to consider any of the following within this parameter. I don't know if the board wants to draw the line and say, nope, we're going forward to the 50-foot right-of-way. It's literally just changing the number, and everything else remains the same. I owe you some updates with regard to current regulations changing to 2024 regulations, changing the reference to zoning ordinance versus zoning regulations, clarifying the apparently errant footnote under Table 1, and providing some waiver criteria within the road cross-section itself for the planning board. And I can come back after that.
And you're going to pass all this by Steve Randall?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And share his feedback with the board if he doesn't want to share it himself.
Sounds good.
So the next step would be...
Another draft coming back, yeah.
Okay, and then we'll set a public hearing after that.
Depending on board feedback on the revised draft, you could set a public hearing, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
That sounds good, thank you. So next on the agenda is the short-term rental update. Roger.
Doug, Kathy, and I have been working on a short-term rental, something to address short-term rentals. We have come up with a definition, and we were looking at a licensing agreement. That would be presented to the selectmen. But before we did that, we wanted to make sure there were no issues with it, and we met with town council, and based on our discussions with him, we came away from that thinking that perhaps that was not the best way to proceed at this point in time. And so we are going to be considering other avenues.
Is the definition that you came up with different than what we had before?
No.
So could we just work on that, so that we know what we're talking about?
The general takeaway I heard was that the board should be encouraged to not specify short-term rentals as what's being addressed, because there's statutory reference suggesting that residential properties are residential properties regardless of the term of occupancy. So RSA 48A basically says that short-term rentals are to be treated as residential properties. So one of my specific questions was, should perhaps the committee be turned into a housing committee versus a short-term rental committee? And he seemed generally supportive of that direction.
That was not quite my takeaway from the conversation. I think it can be addressed under zoning. There is a New Hampshire Supreme Court case in Portsmouth that allowed them to regulate short-term rentals. And I think the question was if it was not done as part of zoning, there's a statute, RSA 48A, which says you can impose other restrictions, ordinances on short-term rentals. And there was a concern that trying to do it that way may not be successful. I think there are a couple of towns that are pursuing that, and once they get through Superior Court, and possibly the State Supreme Court, we'll have a better idea whether that avenue can be pursued. But at this point, I think we'd be looking at, you know, one alternative is to look at some of our existing ordinances, and are there things that can be done to them to beef them up, and also looking at zoning.
So there are towns that have definitions and rules for short-term rentals. I mean, you could all look up Durham. It's very specific and very well-controlled, extremely controlled. You have to actually have the owner live on the property to have one. But they have such a thing.
Is that, that's part of their zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's different from...
Well, that's what we are, the planning board. We work on zoning, so we should get something in the zoning regulation.
Right, I agree with you. But we wanted to know what the status of our group was, so I take it you want us to go back and keep at it, put it in, and think of ways to put it in the zoning regulations, right?
Definition, for sure.
Yeah.
That was the big stumbling block. We have to start with what it is.
Not a definition, but having a definition doesn't do anything for you if you don't have provisions of the ordinance governing it. You will either ban all short-term rentals in the town if you just have a definition.
Anything new coming in, yes. It would, if it doesn't meet the criteria, it can't be a short-term rental.
Correct. So an option would be to consider short-term rentals or transient occupancy, whatever you want to call them, to tie it into the Portsmouth case as a special exception? That is an option, or a conditional use permit, or something along those lines.
I think we have to do something.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, we are proposing to do something. I mean, right now, we're looking at something that would not be acted upon until next March on the town warrant. We were looking at whether...
Well, we should get it settled and figure out what it is and do it. I mean, we've been kicking it around for two years.
Longer than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it started much longer than that.
I know.
Well, the board did have a definition on the warrant two years ago that the town destroyed, so...
Well, we can go back to that.
All they're talking about is the definition, right now.
Okay, so that's our marching orders, right?
Sounds like it.
Okay, good.
All right, with that, I don't have anything else on the agenda.
Yeah, let me just, you know, I wanted to touch on our multifamily meeting that we had last time, because I thought Ann Blodgett brought up something that we probably really need to think about and do. She said that, you know, they're trying to understand why we need more housing. And a couple of the suggestions are elderly housing, is there enough? What are the specific needs for housing? How much housing do we need for people on various incomes? And, you know, all of that information, I think, a lot of it is available in the Lakes Region Commission's housing study. So, I mean, I think we've got to bring these things to the public so that they know why it is we think this is important.
It's also in the master plan. We had a housing chapter in the master plan...
Right.
Which came about from surveys of the public.
But, I mean, it would be good to have some good, up-to-date information on what the real needs are. I mean, I tried to put some definitions and things together, and they're on the webpage, but people didn't seem to be particularly... But people didn't seem to be particularly interested in that, but anyway, I did it. And, you know, and that was just sort of the beginning. I mean, that's explaining what the different types of housing are. Now we need to know what it is we need. I mean, do we need more elderly housing? All I know is that at the food pantry, we have a lot of single families coming into the food pantry, and I have no idea where they're, they're living. You know, how much do we need in the way of moderate housing or workforce? And those, that type of formula is in the planning commission's information. And we really need to bring it forward, talk about it, and let the public know what the, that information is. Anyway, I really think we need to have further discussions on, on those issues.
And if in some of the other ordinances, such as conservation subdivisions, we have bonuses for providing long-term, you know, fixed affordable housing integrated into, let's say it's a 50-lot subdivision, if we can get there, then it's not just a low-income district. It's just certain designated units in a neighborhood. Hopefully in perpetuity, and you can write that into the regulation. And it's nothing new. I mean, in the old days, people had servants' quarters. You know, I'm not suggesting they're servants, but it's, it's been a prototype here.
So what's the catalyst to do that, to?
Well, I mean, I think it's, it's up to Tavis to bring us that information so that we can see it, discuss it, and the public can see it.
I mean, the 2023 Lakes Region Housing Needs Assessment is available on the Lakes Region Planning Commission website, which is lakesrpc.org. And it's probably has more information than you want to read.
I think Kathy shared that.
Yeah, right.
I guess I don't know what I'm bringing. I mean, I can send people the website, and you've already shared them the document.
No, no, I mean, you know, I think it would be good to bring it to the planning board so that we can have a discussion in, in public about it, and people can comment on it. I mean, I think that was the basis of Anne's comments. And, you know, I think we need to consider these things.
I'm a fan of executive summaries. So if we could hit the high points on what they're talking about. I mean, how much does that weigh, Roger, at regulation, 45 pounds?
Not that heavy.
An executive summary might be, might be handy.
There is an executive summary on page six. It looks like it's only one page long, so.
But as it pertains to Wolfboro itself is what I think Kathy's.
Yeah.
Well, this has all the towns in the region in it.
We're special.
That's true.
Yes.
Anyway, I think that's something we need to consider.
Tavis? Do you get the gist of that executive summary comment? Just maybe as far as Wolfboro and how it compares to the planning guide?
Sure. I think it would be beneficial for the board to sit down and gut through it because the executive summary does gloss over all of the, how they got to the answers and things to consider, but yes.
Yeah, I mean, when we're talking about housing, you know, housing means a lot of things to people. To me, it means affordable. To other people, it means other things. And we need to, you know, define those things and tell people where the needs are or where the planners think the needs are. And then at least the public has something to, to go on.
I agree with that.
I have one.
Sure.
One other thing is that in the master plan, there was a move to have a recreation map of Wolfboro provided, and that now seems to be moving forward, especially with the help of Tavis, who has, can make sure that it's GPS dealt with. And so I think we're finally moving forward on recreation map of Wolfboro.
That's good news. All right, and with that, I'll open up for a public comment. Patty?
Are you turned on?
Maine, no, no.
There you go.
Patty Cook, South Maine. What confuses me is so much discussion about shortage of housing. And I have never heard the connection of loss of housing. I'm going to say firsthand that I have a 29-year-old son who is newly married and desperately was trying to buy a home here in Wolfboro. He put in eight offers on homes, and for a fact, I know six of them were sold as Airbnbs. And the other two, we haven't been able to find out for sure the status. So the information is readily available even just online. Have we ever gone and counted now how many Airbnbs are in town by going on Vacation Rental by Owner or Airbnb's websites? Eighty-five houses?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I guess at some point it would behoove us to know this number. I can tell you at a glance, it is way over 85. But, you know, while we need to look at both sides of additional housing, we are rapidly losing, and I'll give the example of my neighborhood in North Main Street. We lost the neighborhood. It has become entirely Airbnb, and it was a neighborhood. So we're losing the character of neighborhoods. And in many cases, which was my son's case, anything that unfortunately is considered affordable these days, which we all still joke at those numbers, they're selling to be Airbnbs. So that is, there is a real direct correlation, and I wish I could hear more of a connection on these discussions. Thanks.
Yeah, well, we have just finished saying that we're going to be discussing the short-term rental also because, I mean, I agree with you. We've got to look at all of it, including the houses that are being turned into short-term rentals.
Part of this is the frustration of how long these discussions have gone on. Peter was, is technically still on the short-term rental committee, which has not met in years.
That's right.
Was never given any directive or task to come to any kind of consensus or solution. I wish he was here tonight and could talk about that, but I'm going to ask that he does meet with the board.
Yeah, okay, well, the last meeting we had of the short-term rental committee, the committee was totally divided. And so, you know, came back to the planning board and talked about it because there really wasn't much reason, I think, for anyone wanting to consider with that particular committee.
Again, I'll ask Peter at some point if you'll, would be willing to talk to the board with his take. He does zoning and all of that for a living, and I think he had some interesting points, too. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hello? I'm Sibeth Stroman, and I wanted to speak to a couple of things. One is just the Airbnb and the short-term rental. I think, just off the top of my head, I hope you're looking at more than licensing. That's a pretty narrow definition of what you should be talking about. I think there's a permitting process that should take place before licensing. And we know of buildings that are going up where there aren't site reviews, and word is they're going to be Airbnbs, and we look at parking. So I really hope you get your arms around it soon and you do more than just look at how do we license and follow that up. And then I wanted to say something about the conservation housing. Because I don't know, you know, I don't know much about it. I just happened to hear it tonight. I think some of it sounds like a good idea. I don't think it has to be either/or. Let me see what some of my notes are. But I think the success of it is going to depend on your ability to add some criteria that does kind of what Peter was talking about when he said, we've got the master plan, we're trying to create an aesthetic that goes with that. But so you build in criteria that specifically is going to give the sense of not a subdivision, but aesthetics that might include things like a certain kind of landscaping, a lot of trees, the way the road is laid out. I mean, we lay, we give that to a builder, that the houses, you don't drive by and see just a subdivision up in the sky. I think the idea of a leach field that, and I don't really understand how that works, but I guess it does. I thought you weren't supposed to play on leach fields, but maybe, obviously, you can. But I think you even specify how a leach field could, you have them specify how they're going to use it because otherwise it might just become this big space, this just a big space that's not being utilized in some way. So I guess I'm saying that the key to the success of it is not just to have the conservation area, but also specific requirements. And one of my concerns is that right now, as a town, I'm not sure we're doing the job we need to be doing just with single-family housing and following up on the requirements that are needed for that as those are built. And so before we move into something that's going to require a lot of, a lot more monitoring, let's make sure we're in a place where we can really enforce and uphold what we're asking developers to do. Thanks.
Please, thank you. Anyone else? If there's nothing more, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
No, wait a minute. Before we do that?
Oh, we got to do the minutes.
Before we do the minutes, what's, tomorrow is the hearing on the merits on? I'm sorry, tomorrow is the hearing on the merits of the heart appeal of the Beckwith ADU. And how's that being handled?
By your attorney.
Is anyone from the town going to be there?
I'm going to be participating on the webex, and I can share that with anyone that also wants to participate. But, right, specific to your concerns, I asked planning board attorney if anyone needed to plan on attending and was told no.
Thank you. Should we move to the minutes?
Well, you know, how would we know that unless you actually brought it to us? I mean, I didn't know that we had to ask our attorney if we could.
You didn't have to ask. Originally, the update was the Housing Appeals Board appeal had been turned over to council, and the planning board action wasn't required. But when it went to the preliminary hearing, the question then arose, does anyone need to attend? And I updated the board that no one needed to attend. And now the question has come up, does anyone need to attend at the actual hearing? And the answer is still no. I haven't asked repeatedly. It's the same answer that's been throughout. And the board was updated on that several months ago.
Okay, but this hearing is tomorrow, and, you know, it would have been nice if it was brought to our attention, I think.
I think the full calendar was shared with the board, and obviously, the outcome will be shared with the board. Yes, you can go onto the, if you go onto the Housing Appeals Board page, you can get a link to the time. Housing Appeals Board. I can show you later if you'd like. Where?
Where was the agenda for tonight?
It's on three bulletin boards on the website.
It wasn't on the website this morning.
I don't know what to tell you, Anne. It was posted yesterday when I came in.
Yesterday for today?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty-four hours in advance is when it's required. Technically, the website doesn't require, except as?
Okay, last time I looked, it wasn't there. Next, what's happened with the third phase of Harriman Hill?
I haven't heard any update from the town side. It's up to?
I mean, we talk about housing, but then we never get updates on what's in?
Question.
What?
I was just going to answer your question.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's out to bid right now. And so, once the bids come in, then, you know, we should be in good, good shape, so, and that'll be in June.
I mean, I think with all these housing discussions, you know, short-term rental is integrated into the housing discussion. Housing projects in process, if the public could know what's going on with those, a comprehensive picture of what's going on. It's, it's so piecemeal. It's, it's, you know, what's the latest on short-term rental? Oh, it's dead. You know, other towns are doing stuff. It's, and it has been, I think, five years, Vaughn. I bet it's five years that, that this has been under discussion.
Yeah, I think so.
So shame on us.
Well, I wonder if that committee couldn't meet to discuss what we had proposed and why it wasn't good enough. You know, we should revisit that. Or we should just re-propose what we proposed before if it is good enough, and it just happened to be in with a group of things that were not amenable to most people. You know, as an isolated thing, not as a group of 10. And just see what went wrong there, just that one thing.
I think that one thing was fine. People just didn't read it. They were all on the note.
Maybe we should just bring it back up.
It didn't pass, so that doesn't make any difference, really.
I think we crafted it well. It just, you know, it wasn't its minute.
Okay, anything else? Let's move to the minutes. And Roger, if you have any suggestions here?
On page two, partway down, it says, Peter Goodman questioned the acreage in use for the project. I'm not sure he did that. But the response, apparently from Christopher Berry stated horizontal load for sewer. And those two don't seem to follow each other.
Is that it, Roger?
No, on page three, partway down, I questioned whether a zoning variance was being requested regarding density. And I don't think the developer stated yes. I think he, I think he was non-committal, but I don't think he said that was one of the variances being requested. Then further down, I noted the conservation restrictions would apply. I asked whether conservation restrictions would apply.
A conservation, what was that, Roger?
He asked instead of noted?
Yeah, I asked whether there are going to be conservation restrictions on the area outside the red lines. And then, after Steve saying he saw no problem with building height, the applicant saying he stated no, nothing, noting the environmental impact, construction timeline, energy efficiency, maybe that follows. And then under Randy Walker, he said there was no commercial use. But I don't think there were eight variances. I think the variances were height, five units per building. I think the variances were height, five units per building, and I'm not sure what else.
I think height is missing an H.
You think what?
The word height is eight, just on that Randy Walker comment you just quoted. I wasn't here, though, I shouldn't comment.
Can I just jump in since we're on that spot? It said that I stated it was premature, as the state needs to approve it first, but we were talking about, at that time, they asked us if we thought this was going to go forward, if we felt that this would be, you know, something that would happen. And at that point, I said, well, I think it's premature to ask us because we want public input. I don't think I said the state. And then, when I look at Randy Walker's comment that he would welcome public comment, that's, I mean, I think that's what I said, was that we would need to hear from the people of the town.
Right.
That it was premature to ask us. Thank you.
So, board instead of state, is what you're saying?
No, I said, I thought it was premature to ask us, and that I felt that the people of Wolfboro should have a chance to comment first, and that's why he said to me that he would welcome the public comment.
So, the comment needs to be...
Yeah, the state...
Received first. Public comment.
Yeah.
But not state.
No, no, I wasn't. I didn't mean to say that anyway, and I don't think I did.
No, I don't think, I don't think you did either.
That's how she heard it. Can we go all the way to number one, call to order? Because I'm confused. It said Kathy called everything to order, but yet Doug was here. So, why would she have done that if Doug is the chairman and opened everything up?
Maybe she just was using an old template and didn't...
That's right.
I don't know. I was here that day, and I don't know.
You don't remember that, Kathy?
Yeah, okay.
Kathy was overstepping, I think that's what it was.
Thank you, Julie.
Couldn't give up the seat.
On the top of page six, it said, Peter Goodman stated the influx of multifamily dwellings we're using could bring in young families. I think he said housing, not using. That's it.
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes with the corrections just made.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Oh, a second.
Thank you, Roger. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? Abstain, one abstention. Thank you.
Okay.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Yes.